Later is proposal to sell the fire station sixty-two at the Blanton campus to Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue. And we'll turn it over to our great subject matter experts here Laurel Brown, our Facilities and Parks Director, and Greg Wyman, our Real Estate and Planning Program Manager Expert.
Thank you Chair Harrington and Commissioners. As you mentioned, we're here to talk about an unsolicited query to purchase a portion of county-owned property. With that, I will turn it over to Greg Wyman, who is our Real Estate and Planning Program Manager to provide you with those details.
Thank you Laurel. Good afternoon Chair Harrington and Commissioners for the record. My name is Greg Wyman. I'm the Real Estate and Planning Program Manager here at Washington County. As Laurel indicated today, we're here with the purpose of exploring the potential sale of fire station sixty-two to Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue at the county-owned Blanton Campus and to obtain board direction on this proposed sale. Little history and background on this is Blanton Campus was purchased from Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue in September two thousand eighteen at a cost of eight million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was a prospective site for the new Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency. And funding sources included six point five five million through Washington County Oregon General Bond Series two thousand sixteen and two million from the facilities capital fund. The purchase included allowance for Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue to continue to use and occupy most of the campus through December of two thousand twenty. The design team identified an alternative location preferred by WACA and accordingly, no other development has occurred to date on this campus. County utilized the administration building for swing space during the public services building seismic retrofit from early two thousand seventeen through late two thousand eighteen. Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue reduced their footprint to only the fire station use in December of two thousand twenty, including the tower in the middle, and this agreement will expire in July two thousand twenty-four. This is just a pictorial of the Blanton Campus itself. It is seven point two five acres comprising three tax lots. The fire station is noted in yellow fronting southwest two hundred and ninth Avenue. And then there's the other two parcels. This proposed sale would only include the fire station itself and a small portion of land surrounding that. So that would include only tax lot three oh two and a portion of that. We would need to parcelize that lot in order to right-size the sale of it while preserving the ingress and egress off of two hundred and nine for county use and Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue. This next slide is just the utilization currently of the campus. Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue occupies station sixty-two. Right now, their agreement will expire in June of two thousand twenty-four this year. They are not paying anything currently, and that was part of the previous board's direction and part of this quasi-sale leaseback on the property. We would propose that anything moving forward, whether we sell the station or we extend the term there for the use would be at a fair market rental, and that would be projected at approximately fifteen thousand dollars a month. The facilities building is currently being utilized by land use and transportation through June of this year, and then it will become vacant. They are using that for part of their field office for the road construction project that's taking place in that area. The fleet apparatus building is currently leased to American Medical Response for Emergency Medical Transportation Services in conjunction with the county contract that they have with AMR. The current rent on that is eighteen thousand eight seventy-eight a month, which is a market rent for that property and would be going up to nineteen thousand four hundred and forty-four next year. This is a three-year short-term lease with no renewal options, but certainly could be negotiated and extended at the end of the three years if needed. The tower in the middle of the campus is really a part and parcel of that fire station. They utilize that for specific trainings, and we have included that with the use for station sixty-two. The administration and training building currently is just used as a limited office space and place for the sheriff's office to be able to have restroom facilities and report writing abilities within the building itself and in the parking.
Slow you down because you didn't, didn't put on that twenty-four-five forecast. That's monthly, right?
Yes, that is. Yes, these are monthly figures, not.
It says out of twenty-three-four, but I didn't.
And then there's storage on there, which is being currently utilized by emergency management. It was being utilized for storage of PPE, and that is pretty much sunset it now, and they will be out of there at June of this year. And then the gravel lot is the last piece. That is the small tax lot on the previous slide that was noted. We are currently leasing that to Community Action for their bus program for Head Start, and that is twelve hundred dollars a month for them to park on there, and we would increase that to thirteen hundred dollars a month in fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five. The next slide is just a couple of pictures, pictures worth a thousand words. It's the front of the station there on two hundred and ninth. There is a fueling station behind the TV F and R, which services or is utilized by them for their fire trucks. And this is the last photo on here is the back of the fire station, which empties out to that area between the two buildings. The needs and considerations for this potential sale would be for TV on F and R. They have requested additional term to allow time to complete the build-out of the replacement station. That's what brought them to the table and inquiry to the C A O's office about additional term or alternatively exploring the purchase of station sixty-two. Other governmental agencies were considered for the purchase of station sixty-two, including the city of Hillsborough, who had previous interest in this station during the lease term for TV F and R. They have since secured an alternative location and are working through construction of that, and are no longer interested in buying for this property. Required actions to complete the requested property sale would include an appraisal of station sixty-two. The estimated cost for this would be five to seventy-five, five thousand to seventy-five hundred dollars. A tax lot partition, as I mentioned earlier, to only include the station and some surrounding land while preserving the access to two hundred and ninth. That is estimated to be twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand. Both of these expenditures would be covered by TV F and R as part of a purchase-sale agreement if we choose to move forward with that. And then an easement for the county ingress, as I just mentioned, to preserve that access off of two hundred and ninth so that we have both access from two oh ninth and Blanton, and that's just an internal with county council to work through and what we would call a cross-access easement agreement, giving both parties the right to use those driveways and curb cuts and having cross-access to the property.
So that's from tax lot two hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then the condition to purchase would include TV F and R entering into, as I mentioned previously, a market-based lease agreement to begin immediately for any extension of their present lease or use agreement on that property through the period in order to get it to a close if we chose to sell, sell the property. Next slide really talks about allocation of proceeds. Since this was a bond, the bond requires the proceeds from the sale to be used in one of the following manners within two years of receiving those proceeds. We can either pay down the bond.
Wait, when did we receive the proceeds?
From receiving the proceeds from this sale, excuse me. We can either pay down the bond. It could be spent on capital costs listed in the ballot, which would include converting existing nine-one-one system to current technology, improving county-wide radio coverage by installing more towers, strengthening facilities to withstand emergencies, expanding the nine-one-one dispatch center or and expand and/or other county emergency response facilities. Replace approximately three thousand analog radios currently in use by responders throughout the county.
And we can't use it to repay the two million dollars to the facilities capital fund?
I'm going to defer to county council who has been working with bond council on this matter.
Right down there.
Thank you for the question Chair Harrington. For the record, my name is Courtney Dugreeson, Deputy County Counsel. We have been exploring these questions with bond council. As you can appreciate it, it's pretty complicated and it's going to require, at this point, some of it's a little bit hypothetical because we haven't appraised the or we don't have a negotiate, we don't have a negotiated purchase price. So we would have to do some work to determine how to make the bond whole out of potential proceeds from this portion. The portion of the original bond proceeds allocated to the station would have to be determined, and then we'd have to see what we got on a sale, making the bond whole. And then I believe anything beyond that could be repaid to the capital fund, but all of that is unknown at this juncture, but we're exploring it.
So it's an open question is the result, and I don't have a problem with that. Really what my problem, what I would like to see is that in addition to getting a market appraisal just for the station part, I would also like at the same time to get a market appraisal for that tax lot two hundred and one hundred and one, so that at the point in time we have full market appraisal information for all three of the tax lots, so we can go into this eyes wide open. So bond proceeds plus two million dollars were used to secure all three properties. So I want to make sure that that portion that is allocated just to the station tax lot is known, and we know what the remaining portionality is from the remaining bond funds. Because this was quite prospective on the part of the Board of Commissioners at the time. And I doubt their due diligence in getting serious with WACA about site selection. And now we're left with a bag of goods and an extraordinarily long list of liabilities that continues to grow. So I am really dismayed that the two million dollars was put into practice on such a lacking due diligence with regard to supporting WACA. And we're left holding the bag, so to speak, which is why I'm asking for the full market assessment. I think it, what you're doing is, in my opinion, and I know I'm going first here. I think it's a perfectly reasonable request that TV F and R is making, and I support your doing the due diligence to see, to practice the art of the possible. And now you know what my issue and needs are. So I'm sorry I jumped the gun in terms of your slides.
No worries. Thank you Chair Harrington. So.
How many radios? Can we get the actual, how many analog radios are still in use? Because we were told with the bond that it was a full going from analog to digital. So I'm a little dismayed to hear that WACA is still carrying analog responsibility.
Ms. Calvert will provide that as follow-up information.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. So the desired outcome and next steps here would be to obtain the board's direction to explore the sale of station sixty-two and a piece of land to be defined for that, for that purpose. Determine the size of parcel to be sold, and that kind of ties into that first piece. And get an appraisal now on the entire assemblage, the entire seven acres with a breakdown of that appraisal to indicate the three tax lot values, including the fire station sale. Bringing a consent item agenda back to the Board of County Commissioners to authorize entering into a purchase-sale agreement and negotiating and executing a purchase and sale agreement with easements in place for Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue. I would say that the approximate value range based upon an income approach right now of what we could get in rental income for that fire station would be somewhere between three point eight and four point seven million dollars. And that's based upon a nine or ten cap return rate on that. Whether the appraisal will support that, I don't know. That is my best educated guess here, based upon the market as I know it. And I think that our timing on this would be at six to nine months, and that may be a little optimistic considering all the pieces that we have to go through and then coming back and really analyzing that due diligence and bringing that back to this board.
Thank you. Commissioner Treese, we're going to go to you first because we know you have a time deadline. Do you have any questions? Or any approvals, thumbs up on the four different modified desired outcomes and next steps?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate, I appreciate your setting the stage Chair Harrington. I guess I'm sorry I was off camera. I apologize for that. I appreciate you setting the stage. I don't have any questions. I'd like to hear what the other comments are. I can stay for another maybe fifteen minutes. So is that?
Yep, Commissioners in the room.
Yeah, well, I think, I think you did set the stage really well, Chair. I I, yeah, I have a number of concerns and questions about this, I guess. I'll back up. The income approach of valuation, I don't think is a probably a good measurement to be valuing this property. I'd like us to make sure that we look at, we're going to sell a piece of a piece of property, which may devalue the remaining pieces of the property. We're going to have some costs and get involved with the ingress and egress, I'm assuming off of the two different street locations. So there's a lot of kind of unknowns to me in there. I also love the question of we want to pay back the capital fund two million dollars. I would like to think that would be our top priority of this money. There's been no impact, I'm assuming Tanya, to the general fund on any of this from the standpoint of payments?
Uh, no, it was just the two million from the facilities capital fund. I do want to just lift up and highlight the facilities department and moving towards clear agreement in place with our partners and moving away from free rent because free rent does have a cost to the county. So I'm just, I would say there are hidden costs to how we.
Fire practice.
Yep. Yes. And so moving to a new future that we are, in essence, costing for the cost of our buildings.
Yeah. And I think you summarized that really well. So so yeah, go forth and put together the plan of action and come back with some numbers and some specifics on this thing. I'll be glad to entertain that at that time, but.
Thank you Commissioner Willie, and it's a very good point. This is a very unique property, and comps will be very difficult at best to be achieved. So my guesstimate of three point eight to four point seven is really just a, a what I would call a wag guess at best, and I think it'll be very enlightening to see that appraisal and where they value base that property. And the parcel size itself will have an effect on that. So thank you for those comments.
Was there a market assessment when the original purchase was done?
There was an appraisal done when the original purchase was done, and that appraisal backed right into the purchase price of eight million five hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
For the three parcels totaling seven point five acres.
Okay, thank you. Other Commissioners?
Thumbs up for me for in terms of your next steps. The first one is obtain board's direction is the first bullet point, and then second one is determine the size of parcel. And then it goes into the third bullet point, which says bring a consent agenda. Would the board have an opportunity in between those two bullet points to have a conversation or is it just consent agenda?
We could certainly bring that back at this board's direction to another work session or an executive session, whatever is appropriate at that time, to share that appraisal with you before we've come into a full consent agenda item.
My comments. First comment before we even get into my questions is certainly interesting, two thousand twenty-four, to hear your comments and what I remember presented to us, wanted to purchase a very different story, and so I'll just say it was different. So very, very interesting. This is unincorporated Washington County? I don't, right?
Yes.
What's the zoning?
Is zoned industrial, all three parcels.
And yeah, is that the highest and best use? Can it be rezoned?
Uh, it could probably be rezoned. That would be up to land use and transportation in that process.
Yep.
Best and highest use now, it would probably be either the industrial or with the explosion of house growth out there, it may be better used or higher price being developed as a housing tract.
What?
It does wrap the P G E substation, so that does create some limitations on it there.
What I would ask it to do, much along what Jerry was asking you, when you de-aggregate property, it starts to devalue. But what other uses what we might have, and I'm not saying with the present industrial, because the, the income test on this one doesn't make any sense. Real value is maybe to rezone and do something, do something different, which would drive your costs of, you know, partition. I'm not sure who, I guess with the twenty to twenty-five thousand we're paying ourselves. Because we're, if, if you read partition, that's going to the county, right?
Yes, we would look to TV F and R to pay that cost, and we have talked to them about that in our preliminary meeting. They would agree to pay that cost. That would be going to the county land use and transportation. And that twenty to twenty-five thousand was an estimate from Stephen Roberts.
That's not us taking a look at it and somehow subdividing it. That would be up to them, you're telling me.
We, we would make our recommendations, agree upon it with what land TV F and R would need and preserving our access to it. And then it would be a process through land use and transportation to provide that tax lot segregation.
So I guess my point real quick, one, if I had magic wand, I would simply say, hey, what other uses could it be resoned for? What would be permissible? And what would value be if it was rezoned? That makes a whole big difference because if it was a commercial or if it was housing, it's worth a lot more, obviously.
But it'd be surrounded on three sides by industrial.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, not today's market. So it's worth looking. I would also say that the is there any other value to the county? And if you say no, that's why you're dishing it off and selling a piece. Is there any campus? I mean, it was supposedly sold to us that there was going to be this big campus out there for multi-uses. We wouldn't be selling part and wondering what we're doing with the rest if that was true. So it doesn't have any value to us as a county, right?
I would hesitate to say that it doesn't have value. The land has value. The buildings are quite aged and have a lot of preferred maintenance on them, which would require a lot of infrastructure repair. And we may look at potentially whether it could be scraped and rebuilt and utilized for some other county purpose. And that's what we're looking at through the strategic facilities plan long-term.
Stretching this. Yeah, so I, I don't know that I'd go on any more than that. I just think that it was, if you take a look at the, what the cost of de-aggregating the lots are, what's, what would be the value if there was zoning changes? And I question whether you're going to need that property. It's not exactly where you want it to be for county purposes. But anyway, that's it. Go forth.
Okay, it looks like we have a full commission wanting to proceed with the modified next steps.
Thank you Chair Harrington and Board.
Great. Thank you very much for bringing us the best information.
Thank you.
All right, next we're going to move to Board and Leadership Communications. Commissioner Treese, I'm going to call on you first.
Thank you very much. I just want to mention that I will be submitting a letter in support to, to the legislature or to the legislature on the right to repair bill, and I believe that you have that in front of you. Thank you Kevin for passing it out right now. And this is, the purpose in putting this in front of you is just to let you know, I'm not asking for anything more, but I want in in the effort of full transparency, I just want you to know what I'm doing. So if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to Maida, Tom Eggleston, or Zocker. This is basically, this is a bill that allows for the repair and reuse of electronics by getting instructions and parts from the manufacturer. So it slows electronic waste, it increases options for maintenance and repair, and it encourages the use of refurbished equipment. It's especially meaningful, meaningful for schools, for low-income and others. So.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. I'm going to leave. I appreciate you accommodating me today. Thank you very much.
Have a great vacation.
Thank you.
Couple of weeks.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, who would like to go next? One, two, three, go.
I was going to ask her she wanted to sign on to that Salmonberry Trail letter before she parted, but maybe I'll do that. Because I was going to have all five signatures on there, not just your signature, but we're flex.
Ask Meta. Meta wants to text her real quick on your behalf.
Yeah, text her, text Pam and see if she will agree to sign on to that Salmonberry letter.
Please.
Please. So you want to go ahead?
Go for it.
Yeah, so staying with that, I have presented you in the packet with a copy of letter of support for, it's a Tillamook County raise ask for funding the Salmonberry Trail. And so they've just asked us to write a letter of support since we have twenty-seven miles of the Salmonberry. And the difference, I believe, in this is that we will, there's a couple of places we are going to put the Tillamook County Salmonberry Trail Raise Grant application, not just supporting the raise grant application to make sure that they understand that, everybody understands that it's a Tillamook County ask. Not our ask, okay?
So all those in support of signing on to this letter, thumbs up. Okay, great.
Thank you very much. So, yeah, last week I got to enjoy a couple of days of very nice weather, not in Oregon. So then you come back and you jump right back into work, met with Monique Claiborne of G P I. They have made a five million dollar ask from the state legislature, obviously for economic development purposes and specific to probably downtown Portland. They also would like to come out and make a presentation to the board. They haven't been out here for several years. We do make a fairly significant investment in their organization every year, twenty-five thousand dollars. So they are going to come out and just kind of bring us all up to speed on that. I've asked Maida to work with Kevin and you Chair as to where that would plug in, where you'd like to hear that. They said twenty minutes or thirty minutes would be max, so.
Why don't we try and plug that into work session?
Yeah, that's where, that's where I should be.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yep, let's see how we can schedule it.
Okay. Also attended the CAT tour. That was really great. And seen lots, lots of local, every time I go through that tour, I learn something new on it. They're doing such a great job of clearly communicating to everybody and the people that I talk to. I've, now I'm hearing from people who want to go through on this tour, so I'll have to work to see what, if we have some limitations in there. But anyway, it's very cool. They're doing a great job. Sub-zero hero celebration with the Chair and Tanya. Went out there, delivered donuts, and we had to chase down the workers because they were all going to work. So yes, we wandered throughout the facility handing out donuts. That was really great. The A O C Transportation Steering Committee had met last week, and they also made some recommendations. I have communicated that with G R team, and we'll be following up with that.
We had that information for the ledge committee meeting on.
Yeah, yeah.
Friday, our G R team does a good job of keeping us up to date in the last-minute decisions.
Yeah, and we, the Transportation Committee meeting was at eight, and you followed, I think. The ledge committee was usually at ten or shortly thereafter. I can't remember now what the.
And Transportation and Community Development was Friday morning at eight, followed by Governance and Revenue at ten. And then on Monday was the Health and Human Services, the Joint Public Safety Health. the Joint Public Safety Health and Human Services, then Public Safety, then Ledge, then Board.
All right, slow day, huh? Yeah. Anyway, uh, yeah, thank you, GR Team, for always being available to bring me up to speed on this. Let's see, uh.
I will not be attending the Transportation and Community Development Steering Committees. Mainly, I only did it for that housing one.
Now, you did a great job on that. I appreciated that, so thank you very much for uh, being prepared to showing up on that. So let's see, Thursday we have the Clean Water Services Training uh, all day, so that will be cool. I am, Diane, I am going to need to step out of that for about an hour. Uh, there's some voting on COOPAC. COOPAC Northwest Act meets same time um, that day, and I'm gonna need to step out on COOPAC for about an hour to do some vote.
If you're gonna need a conference room, Meta can work with CWS on that.
Yeah, yeah, Stephanie does a good job on that, but yeah, they, they do, they cover for me there.
Great.
And then, um.
We're at ABC, right?
Yeah.
We'll get you the upstairs, upstairs headroom.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, and then Friday I head to uh, Naco in DC, and already communicated to Aaron what my preference for sessions I'm gonna attend, if they're working with NAFISA. So we have good uh, coverage, and I'm looking forward to that.
And you're out next week too, right? Ah, I'm gonna be the only one holding down the fort. No emergencies. We're not having any earthquakes next week. No natural disasters. None. Zero, zip, nada.
Say that every week.
It's gonna be an uneventful week, right, team? Not gonna be able to pass the plaque if anybody, oh, could you please, please, please cover this? I don't know that we've ever had a week where you've all been engaged elsewhere. Oof, that's gonna be a weird sweater to wear.
You've got this.
So you're at NAFISA?
Oh, I am, okay.
Yep.
Thanks for, Tag, you're it. Um, I too attended the, the CAT. This was my second time attending the CAT tour. And I really have to say, like, DR, you, you all do a really good job of uh, making sure elected officials turn up for that tour, and I've also been hearing other legislators that also wanna attend, um, and um, yeah, so more, more people are gonna hear, and that means more money for Washington County hopefully, making your job easier at the Capitol as it's act. I also ha- attended, yeah, uh, last week, uh, the Aloha, uh, Safe Rest Pod Village that opened. It does a really great turnout, um, great remarks from the Chair, um, and myself and others who spoke. It's really, it's the good side. Uh, if you haven't had the opportunity, I recommend both of you to see, uh, it's really, um, uh,
That's the two hundred and nine.
Yeah. No, one, one, one ninety-eight.
One ninety-eight, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I drove by it when it was first proposed, and now I wanna drive back.
Yeah, and go inside tour. It's a nice setup. It's an L.
And what, one of the things I got new out of it was, uh, in addition to the Palat Pod Shelters, there are Palat branded uh, toilet and shower rooms.
Oh.
So two shelters with four units, and they're, they're quality, so really well done.
Yeah, very well done, yeah, underscore the quality. It's just, um, you know, one of those mobiles, buildings, but it's.
That's pretty cool.
The Palat brand of product. No, it's, Palat is the name, the company.
Oh.
It's wood, it's wood. Yeah.
It's both a style and a.
Yeah.
And I have to tell you, the bathrooms are bigger than any of my bathrooms. My house, um, but yeah, very well done to the housing team. This was really, even the design of it, how, how you all came up with that video, it was a good sight to see. Um, and just for board awareness, uh, Oregon Walks will be reaching out to all of you to meet. Uh, they're doing some road safety works. I had a meeting with them. They um, are also reaching out to the rest of the board to see what, what priorities you have and what roads are problematic for each of the districts in the county. And then yesterday also, AOC, uh, you had your meeting, AOC's Transportation on Friday, uh, the HHS, uh, Health and Human Steering, Health and Human Services Steering Committee met uh, uh, yesterday morning at eight AM and had a robust conversations, um, and I really appreciated here in Land Counties, um, the after actions around the pandemic and, and I think I'll leave it to you, Chair Harrington, to, to debrief on the Ledge Committee and the Board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Started a little late this morning. Asked to go to this Waltons Chamber event, so I thought I could speak much. I can never make it, it's always Tuesday. Ran over there and then ran over here, so. Thursday, uh, at the event, uh, at the KABC building.
I muted it, sorry.
I asked Diane if I couldn't talk to you about a stimulating topic. GAZBIE sixty-one, that one, just a little tiny bit, and why it's important, and why I've been a dog on a bone of the uh, component unit issues, what these, why it's important and.
Want to start by telling them what GAZBIE is?
GAZBIE, Governmental Accounting Standard.
And if you don't know what that.
Thank you so much.
That says you need to be on the Washington County Audit Committee. Tag, you're it.
Oh, my gosh.
Next year.
Anyway, so at uh, Tanya and Brad, who I've been talking, Greg, Mom, we've all been talking behind the scenes. It doesn't matter what we do as far as governance issues, whatever. This is an important issue, so we'll see that. Wanted briefly say that I, I wrote a letter to the editor, which got printed a lot. It had to do with the recall, uh, King City. And I think here, you didn't want, well, I did, yeah, so, uh, and I made a contribution, yes, to take that to the, yeah, down at the end. Most importantly, last night, just to bring you up, at our R one act meeting, it was election time, and uh, the majority of the opinion was that, that because I'm not gonna be there for the two-year timeframe, their meeting as an officer, that they selected Paul Sappus. He's going to be the Chair. What I detected, uh, there were a lot of comments, especially people questioning that, but change and, you know, that sort of thing. I frankly, you know, I, the old Kenny Rogers, uh, song where he says, no one to hold and one to follow him. My time to fold. I think it's time to make changes. And so I would wanna resign immediately from R one act, and I would like one of you to pick the responsibility up.
When's Paul take off?
Um, last night. Not because of that, I think it's just, uh, things need to, uh, Jay, there's a change in, uh, I think, the city and county, I've seen it, WC's. Not gonna get into it here, but I think it needs to be discussed.
So let's put it on the February twenty-third work session in general.
Yeah, if anyone wants to do it, and I'll just say that I'm done. Do it, you know, do a great job.
We have, uh, I have chatted with some, uh, with Commissioner Treese about the WSI Work Systems Inc. Board. No, I'm, none of us are rushing you out of committee work at all, because we value your participation. She's interested in uh, getting back on that board and uh, utilizing the, from June to the end of the year as a transition time. We're not letting go of you that easily. No pushing at all. Are you kidding me? I'm gonna be bringing all the value out as much as possible between now and here.
But uh, I think.
Okay, okay. Great. Uh, oh, that leaves me. Okay, first on AOC, I wanna give a shout out to soccer for the behavioral health work and making sure we know to evangelize behavioral health workforce, behavioral health workforce, behavioral health workforce. But also a big thank you to the entire government relations team for all your organization leading up to the start of the short session and what you're doing all through this very busy short session. So, uh, we did have uh, busy discussions at the various AOC committee meetings, uh, and that included the joint meeting of Public Safety and Health and Human Services uh, around the um, measure one eleven. Now I need to transition to, what is it, House Bill four thousand and two? Yes, thank you. Had to get my secret decoder, or not so secret decoder ring straight. There, uh, there was a lot of discussion, and so then pieces and parts were broken apart, and uh, then the Ledge Committee moved from there, so um, things are, things are moving along. There was also conflict at the committee level at Public Safety with regard to the um, Public Safety Workforce Stabilization Act, which is now House Bill forty, forty-five. And so that one was broken out into multiple sections as well. And the, the problem was the conflict between the principles at government, excuse me, governance and revenue, governance, revenue, saying, uh, don't approve things that uh, will increase local costs, and these, the proposal to, um, there's, one part of it is to add the elected district attorney, which at the AOC table, I think we should be supporting because that puts other counties at risk, since they have deputy district attorneys running for district attorney. Then another part is uh, changing the retirement age for uh, police and fire. And that involves a, some cost that we haven't been able to assess here in Washington County. The third thing is uh, categorizing nine-one-one. In our case, that's all WACA. Allowing them to be rec, or authorizing them to be recognized as hazardous, the hazardous workforce, and therefore being part of this police-fire purse and retirement. And um, I think, well, we don't know all the particulars there, right? I think that WACA would incur the costs, but the WACA costs are distributed amongst all of the cities and local governments, so it does increase our costs. So um, uh, uh, let's see, I can't remember. So our, leading up to information, uh, we were provided, uh, recommendation to us to oppose all three of those pieces, and I'm not putting my fingers on my ledge, ha, my ledge committee agenda, um. Let's see. The DA part, AOC staying neutral on the has positions opposed, and I can't remember the other one. Yes, so, oh, yep, got complex, so. It's just indicative of how costs are affecting all of us. Beyond that, there were a lot of different bills that were thoroughly discussed, both at the committee and again at Ledge. For a lot of support, so I wanna thank our government relations team, uh, and I know you all are there as well for their assistance as a lot of these things continue to evolve right up to the last minute. And Commissioner Starett at Ledge Committee, she's one of the at-large members now. Uh, and she used her similar MO of not attending the committee meetings or being the sole or minority men uh, voice on the slate, and then pulling the slate off of the, you know, pulling items off of the slate and re-articulating her views or articulating them for the first time, because she didn't go to the committee, and uh, taking a lot of time.
What county?
Yeah. Yamhill, yeah, Yamhill. Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Yep, yep, so. The only other thing, mentioned other stuff that I was at with you all as well, um, you know, I was at the uh, Oregon Justice Department and AOC Courthouse Task Force. I will continue to see that through. Every county has perfectly reasonable uh, applications for this money. And the Oregon Judicial Department uh, sees that, wants to support them. The rub is that there isn't enough money to go around. Uh, what we learned at the committee is that um, there are a couple of counties that received funding, partial funding through the long session that are coming back to try and get a little bit more, and priority wise, they're number one. Uh, we did have some last-minute county uh, requests come in, so we accommodated those in terms of the presentations. And uh, so, um, we, Washington County, uh, got a lot of positive vibe or comments from uh, the Deputy Director of OJD, Mr. Paul Lemon. I got his last name right, didn't I? Phil. He's great. He's an encyclopedia. He's wonderful. Um, so we just need to follow up. No splitting hairs, no dividing. It's all very upfront. I don't know how we're gonna prioritize, because they're all good, so. Anyway, that's that. Um, I was looking forward to a quiet Tuesday, next Tuesday, but now that I'm the only one holding down the fort, I'm like, hmm, a little nerve-wracking. Nothing better happen.
So why don't you go play golf? That'd be a good way to.
Somebody gotta hold down the county. Oh, no, staff will do that. I'll just be here for questions. Anyway, enough, enough, enough. Uh, for me, I used up more than my share of time. I'm sorry. Leadership communication. One, two, three, go.
So I will share some good news. Um, Washington County received an A rating on our cybersecurity, um, through RiskCon rating. Really good news. We went up, and in this case, you want your risk factor, the numbers to go up, so we went from a seven point five at the beginning of twenty twenty-three, and we are now at a nine point four, so.
Good work. IT and everybody else.
So I think this is, um, this is a testament to our strategic focus on cybersecurity and also adding the cybersecurity, uh, the security officer within IT to really have that laser focus uh, from a risk and prevention. And thank you, Commissioners. We did receive one hundred percent um, training on cybersecurity, so I know sometimes we were a little pesky with those reminders, but appreciate you all taking the time to complete your training. Happy to share that Molly Rogers has um, in essence, built out her leadership team and, and the Housing Department. Jill Chen will be joining the Housing Authority of Washington County as the Assistant Director, starting February twenty-eighth. Molly actually had previously worked uh, with, with Jill for almost five years as they implemented bond measures, COVID relief, CDBG, home, et cetera. Um, Jill's assistants think. Um, Jill's a systems thinker who cares passionately about the mission of our work partnering with other agencies, reducing obstacles to getting resources into the commit, community and really the complex needs that housing and homelessness issues have. Um, she, uh, Jill served at the Portland Housing Bureau for approximately seven years, including five as the Housing Investments and Portfolio Preservation Manager. So it's really great to see Molly building out her team. As the Board is aware, it was not just Comey's retirement, Josh moved to Ohio. And, um, so that stabilization is important, the big workload they have.
Yes, and if I could add, um, today's presentation about the, uh, at the Housing Authority Board Meeting about what it takes to, um, take the site selection through all the financing for that two oh ninth site reminds me of, not quite the right word, but the sunk cost, the investment in maintaining a very skilled Housing Authority of Washington County. And that's one of the things that Washington County offers for the wider community and all of our local governments in following through on that. Um, so I, I'm really impressed with the team. Thank you. Brad, you're it.
I, I'm gonna be real brief. Uh, um, I, I sent you an email yesterday about the disability rights case that, uh, we just received. It was, uh, the complaint is sixty-two pages long. We're reviewing it right now. And we'll come back to your board in a future, uh, executive session to discuss.
What is the proper terminology for me? Did they just file a tort claim or?
No, they filed a complaint in federal court, so lawsuit.
Complaint in federal court, okay.
And there, and, and the reason I brought it up to you, uh, yesterday was, uh, we learned about it from the media, and so there's been several media inquiries into our, uh, Phillips team on this. And so we wanted you to be aware of it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Is it just disability rights Oregon who filed the?
No, it's, it's disability rights Oregon, ACLU, and, um, and then they have a private law firm that's working with them to.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Taniguchi Dennis, Clean Water Services.
Thank you. It's already, good afternoon.
Right.
Board of Directors, Clean Water Services. We're really looking, uh, forward to Thursday. The lab wants to show you their, their, um, their current lab and what they're planning to do. Ripple, they're very excited about that. It's a really great team. We have some pretty meaty topics that we're gonna be learning about. So your packet should have arrived here, and it's pretty meaty, but I want to thank you. There are some travel potential opportunities that we listed on Board Initiatives list. That'd be something for us to through. But I, I wanted to put that on the list for you all.
Yep, yep. Great, so we'll meet at ABC?
Yes.
And we're going to tour the lab at ABC?
Yes.
With a vision towards Ripple?
Where they're going.
I don't know, Ms. McKibben, I don't know if I'm allowed to tour the CWS lab again without you. When there was a, um, it was a special forum for local electeds to get to know CWS better. Uh, for that, there were two of them. One was held at Durham, and so there was another site of Durham. And you know, I always learn more at these things, right? And the second one was at ABC, and we toured the lab. And I totally geeked out on the equipment, the big beakers and, and all the testing. Uh, and Megan was with me, and she made sure I didn't touch anything that wasn't supposed to touch.
I was gonna say, did she break any beakers or?
No. No, she kept me out of trouble. So, and we had a good time.
They, they've done some really groundbreaking work on their, uh, that PFOS testing. Very excited to talk about that.
Oh, that'll be good.
Thursday, yeah. And hopefully our little friends won't join us in the room, but they've been out and about, so.
Oh, it's spring.
Yeah, as I say, the warmer it is.
Our little friends.
They're gonna love us.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think one request, if you let the efficiency of the board as well. Uh, Mike McCallum, I, I met him, like, when I was mayor. So that's why I got over here and got a chance to point somebody at one. Sometimes, yeah, but I, I know that we can't, but don't we give certificates of appreciation? And wouldn't it be nice if everyone could, could some, some, so, thank you very much. Acknowledging his service, we all signed it. That's, that's a keepsake, so, just an idea, and people who don't do. I just think it would cut much, you know, a lot of families.
Yeah, the team's really thinking about this. It sounds like, um, they're planning some sort of celebration of his life a little later. Um, so we're, we're keeping tabs of when that would be, and that would be a really lovely presentation, yeah, but, yeah.
He was an active member of CWAC as well.
And when he was at our last meeting, he was, his humor, his insight, his expertise and utilities, it was just something we so much about.
When did he pass away?
It was on the eighteenth, I think. When we had, uh, in January, when the snowstorm, the ice storm was coming. We're gonna really miss him. He were all shot.
Alrighty, well onward ho we go. Uh, have a good trip to Naco. Uh, Commissioner Trese will have a great vacation. Good to you, uh, as well, Commissioner Rogers, and you know where I'll be.
Near Air Norton.
In Washington County.
Last one standing.
I don't dare leave Washington County. Okay, we're in, thank you.
Thank you.